I'm gonna call this study session Littleton City Council order. Uh, Councilmember Peters and Councilmember Brighton are excused for tonight. We got three items on the agenda tonight. We have a city ditch update and then a library update and a museum update. So, I'll go to the city manager to prime the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council and welcome to our guests. Thanks for being here. Tonight, we are gonna have an update from the city of Englewood on their, their project to pipe the city ditch as part of a water, um, quality project essentially. And, uh, so they've been working, I know, hard on this project for probably a couple of years now or longer in, in theory and have been working with our Littleton staff, um, for, for that couple of year period too. And I wanna give them credit for the degree of collaboration and partnership that they've shown through this, this project. Even though it is their, the project and their water rights, um, they've been all the time acknowledging that this does run through Littleton and they've worked with us at every turn. So, um, they're at a point where, uh, they're ready to kinda move to the, the next stage of things and they wanna share an update with our council on the alignment of the ditch specifically and, you know, and other, of, other project matters. I wanna just let our council know, kinda frame this, that this is not the last word for our council on the Littleton, on the city ditch. As you'll hear, there are some outstanding questions for Littleton, um, in terms of how we wanna use some of the, um, excess property that could come, could come about through this, this project. So, um, our staff is still doing some research on some, some questions. So, uh, at the conclusion of Englewood's presentations tonight, you'll hear an update from our staff just on those issues and then we'll be, be planning, um, to come back to you probably in a couple of months, uh, for your further discussion and, uh, direction on those, those matters. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to our deputy, our actual, actually interim director of Public Works Utilities, Brent Soderland, and our guest from, from Englewood, Stephanie Ellis, the utility engineer three for the, for the city of Englewood, and Liv Haugen. Is I close on that? Okay, sorry. Jacob's Engineering. Turn it over to you, your team.
Yeah, so, good evening, council and Mayor. I'm Brent Soderland, like Jim said, the interim director of Public Works. I'm just gonna turn it over to Stephanie and Liv to start off the presentation.
Thank you guys so much for having us. We appreciate your time and we're excited to tell you about the project. We'll give a lot of background information. I don't know how familiar everyone is with the project, but hopefully we can cover where we've been, where we're at, and where we're going in this presentation. Here's what we'll be going through today. We'll walk through the project background and timeline. We'll specifically look at reaches two and three and we'll look at their alignment and then an update on the open channel and flumes. We'll also discuss the trees, vegetation, and restoration, and we'll discuss the stakeholder engagement that's taken place through this project and also next steps. To provide some background on city ditch, city ditch is a hundred and fifty-year-old ditch that was built to provide water to the Denver metro area. Englewood owns, operates, and maintains city ditch between Chatfield Reservoir and Harbor Gulch Park in Denver. It's our primary raw water conveyance that we use to bring water to our treatment plant that we treat and send out to city of Englewood, and it's also used to deliver water to other users in Littleton, Englewood, and Denver. For this project, our plan is to have a fully piped city ditch system between Chatfield Reservoir and the Allen Water Treatment Plant in Englewood. There are four stretches that we're planning on piping, and that's about two and a half miles total, and about two mi, or about four miles of the ditch is already piped. So, majority of it's already piped and about two and a half miles will be piped. Three of these reaches are within the city of Englewood, so you can see it on this map. Reach one, which is the furthest south, just south of Santa Fe and Mineral, that's gonna be piped by a developer. And so, our focus in our discussions today are gonna be on reaches two and three. There are numerous benefits to this project. The primary benefit is the improvement to the source water that we're bringing to our water treatment plant. Chatfield Reservoir, we found has better water quality when we're able to take it directly from there through city ditch and to our water treatment plant rather than when we pull water off the South Pot River at our Union Avenue Pump Station. In addition, city ditch currently has a lot of stormwater inlets or surface runoff that flows into the ditch that impacts the source water. So, by piping it, that will improve the source water and eliminate those stormwater runoffs. From a sustainability perspective, piping city ditch will be beneficial because it's a gravity flow system. We don't need to pump, whereas when we take water off the South Pot River, we do have to pump it, and so that requires electricity. We'll also be reducing losses in the ditch that take place now from evaporation, seepage, and overtopping. And by having this better source water, we should be able to reduce the number of chemical, or the amount of chemicals that we have to use at our water treatment plant for treating the water. From a resiliency's perspective, city ditch is a low maintenance system when it's piped and, uh, and it'll also allow us to utilize the system year round. Right now, it can be challenging to operate in the winter being an open channel ditch in a lot of places. From a safety perspective, we'll be able to limit public access to the ditch by piping it and also limit potential sources of contamination. And overall, this is an important project 'cause we're hoping it can reduce all of our capital investments in other projects such as a softening unit at our water treatment plant. Looking at where we've been and where we're headed, this, uh, project was initiated or thought of back in 2012 when an IGA was signed between the city of Littleton and the city of Englewood that formalized Englewood's plans to pipe the ditch. In 2020, Englewood completed their first, or our first water master plan, and this project was included as a recommendation. In October of 2022, we kicked off our phase one preliminary design. And in April and May of 2023, we held our first public meetings in Littleton and in Englewood. In June of 2023, we began our phase two final design, which is the phase that we're currently in right now. And in November last year, we held a meeting for stakeholders who live along the ditch and reaches two and three here in Littleton. Following that meeting, we offered to property owners the opportunity to meet with us individually to discuss the project and their concerns, and so we met with a number of property owners in January and February of this year. Here we are in March of 2024, meeting with, uh, Littleton City Council to discuss the project. This spring, we're working on finalizing our design permitting and easements, and we're planning on construction, starting construction this summer. And we want a complete construction in 2025. And throughout this whole process, there's been a significant amount of coordination with various stakeholders on the project, which I'll touch on more in a little bit.
So, I'll talk to you a little bit about the preferred alignment. So, reach two is the southernmost port in the city of Littleton that will be done, not by a developer, but by the city of Englewood. So, this is primarily in the Lee Gulch Crossing, um, of Santa Fe area or Ridgewood Park. And you can see, uh, the light blue line shows the existing alignment of city ditch in this area, and then the black line shows the proposed routing for the piped city ditch. Through this alignment, we are approximating, paralleling the railroad as closely as we can. That's a bit constrained by hydraulics and then also the Lee Gulch Crossing, but this gives benefits in that we're shortening the pipeline alignment. We've got a much straighter alignment. It will be in, uh, BNSF right-of-way for most of this, and where it's not, it will be in city of Littleton property.
So, it has preferred alignment. Are there unpreferred alignments and other alternatives?
Yeah, so, um, as Stephanie mentioned, the phase one portion of this project, we did an alignment study where we looked at, uh, three or four alignments for each reach and evaluated those. This preferred alignment is what came out of that. Those alignment alternatives were presented at that initial set of public meetings and we did get, uh, feedback at those meetings. This is the preferred alignment, um, when we considered the multiple different considerations, both the construction cost, but also all the non-cost things such as stakeholders, the hydraulics, um, overall construction impact, um, restoration, the environment, and operation and maintenance. Um, and this is the, looking at the, uh, southern portion kinda zoomed in, but same area, where we will be paralleling again the BNSF railroad in the BNSF right-of-way with the new pipeline alignment.
Maybe you said it, just if I may interrupt the council, the blue line there is the existing ditch alignment, so you can see the separation there.
So, post this project, um, as was shown on those exhibits, you can see that the pipeline is not in the city ditch alignment for the majority of it. At reach two, with the exception sort of north of Lee Gulch, it will be in the ditch alignment. So, post-project, we're gonna, uh, kinda go through what will be happening. The overhead flume crossing of Lee Gulch, this is an existing crossing of Lee Gulch where the ditch crosses above ground in this, um, sort of half-pipe structure that's historically called a flume. So, this would be conveyed to Littleton, um, and then Littleton would be working with the community to either preserve that flume or to create a historical exhibit along the trail in that same area. That was something that definitely came out of the stakeholder meetings and, and just listening to, um, interested parties there. The existing ditch, so we've got this kind of parsed into three pieces. So, south of Lee Gulch, uh, in that area, the existing city ditch does convey a fair amount of Littleton stormwater. So, that ditch will need to be repurposed for Littleton stormwater conveyance to Lee Gulch. So, uh, Englewood's water will be in the pipe, the new pipeline alignment, but the existing city ditch will remain in its current condition where it's not in the construction area, or it will be rebuilt to its approximate dimensions where it is in our construction area for the purpose of moving that stormwater, um, and discharging it to Lee Gulch. North of Lee Gulch, um, the plan would be to vacate the existing easement that's on Littleton property. So, where we don't, or where the Eagle will, would no longer need that ditch because they've got the pipeline, that easement would be vacated to Littleton. Uh, and at this time, the ditch is to remain an open channel, um, wildlife corridor, historic remnant of a ditch, but it would not be flowing water in that location because stormwater is managed separately in that area.
Does the, does the public have access to that part of the ditch now? I mean, who, who would be using that space? I guess, that may be a question for Jim or...
Well, all right, so you can see this particular...
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the, just the part north that she...
The part north.
The most recent description.
Yeah, so, a lot of the city ditch runs through private property, and we've had discussions with those property owners and they would not like people to be getting onto their property once, once the ditch is, I guess, vacated back to them. So...
But where it's on city of Littleton property in that area, um, so there's sort of, uh, part of the park has a Centennial Link Trail. It's kind of upland from that, so it's accessible. It's not... It's accessible, but it's, it's sort of uphill, if that makes sense.
I guess, south of St. Mary's, is where most we run into the private property.
So, the private property came after the city ditch, though?
The ditch has been in place since about the eighteen sixties, so long before any of the neighborhoods or parks or anything in this area.
So, when people bought the house, whatever, they knew they were, part of their land was on public property?
Yeah, I guess the, the key point to that is they're going to be vacating the ditch back to the, to the property owner. So, that's why we'll get the city ditch on Littleton property and the private property owners will get city ditch on their own.
Is it more of an easement?
It is.
So, they still...
So, they'll get their property.
What they do is a nice little street.
If I may introduce you, Mayor, uh, that's the latest, uh, Public Works Director. Well, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody.
Peter Van Ry.
Peter Van Ry, Director of Utilities in South Pipeline Renew. So, anything related to property is, we, we have, anything we're talking about from a property perspective is what we're leaning towards. All of that requires approval from the city of, of Englewood Council, so we can't commit to anything from a property perspective until we take it through city of, uh, Englewood Council. What we are doing is we're working closely with Littleton to figure out what's the, what's the most logical, easiest way to help you accomplish your goals, help us accomplish our goals, and to do that as streamlined a process as possible, realizing that both councils have to approve that. So, if we talk about anything from a property perspective tonight, realize that there's, there's a, a number of approvals that have to come. It's all, it's all proposed, so. So, I just wanted to make sure that that clarification was there. So, we haven't established that we're gonna turn anything over yet until we work out the final plan, which we are doing in coordination with Littleton. I'll go back to my seat.
Thank you.
Most likely to get questions if he's not sitting.
Um, okay, so then reach three is in Slaughterhouse Gulch Park. And here you can see, again, in light blue is the existing city ditch alignment, and then the black line represents where the new proposed pipeline will be. The majority of reach three, the pipeline will be within the existing ditch, um, alignment. So, we'll be putting a pipeline where the ditch is and filling over that. The exception is in Slaughterhouse Gulch Park itself, where we'll be taking a straighter line through that park with the ditch and avoiding, um, the more public areas of that park, the Estrian Bridge over the, the gulch and that area. On the north side, the existing city ditch is within the city of Littleton Maintenance Yard. We looked at multiple options to try to get it out of the Maintenance Yard, but unfortunately the hydraulics and the available topography are not in our favor, so we will be putting the pipeline, um, roughly within the existing, existing city ditch alignment, but staying close to your property line in that area. Uh, but it will remain within the city of Littleton's Maintenance Yard.
Can I ask, so for Kyler, Jim, what's the vision for what Slaughterhouse Gulch is supposed to look like in ten years, just based on our current plans for that kinda space? Sorry.
I mean, so, existing Slaughterhouse Gulch is a nature park. I envision that it'll probably stay a nature park. You know, it's, it's basically for passive recreation. I would say walking on the trail. There's some benches in there for people to sit on, so it's gonna be like pass, it'd be passive recreation, I think.
Are we expecting that there's gonna be a trail that goes under the, under the railroad tracks that connects, um, kinda the cities, where we, where we are now with that?
Yes, there will be a trail, yeah, along Slaughterhouse Gulch.
So, how is that pipeline, is it gonna be raised? We're essentially expecting a trail to go across the pipeline. So, how is that gonna work?
Yeah, so, um, Littleton did provide us with the CAD drawings for that proposed trail crossing, and we have coordinated the pipeline alignment with that trail crossing. So, when you do the cut to get in and under, you'll be out away from where our pipeline is, so those two projects will...
I mean, I'm being really lame, but are people literally just gonna walk over the pipeline as they go?
It's buried.
Oh, it's buried. It's all buried.
Thank you for helping me with that.
Sorry, yeah, it'll be buried.
So, where there's trail, is that trail gonna be replaced or taken into camp?
Yeah, so everything, and we'll hit on restoration in a little bit, but trails will be restored to existing or better condition.
Can you speak louder, please?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
So, post-project conditions, the, uh, overhead flume crossing Slaughterhouse Gulch will be conveyed to Littleton's. The existing ditch in Slaughterhouse Gulch Park, where the pipeline won't be in that ditch alignment, will be vacated. It is on Littleton property all through that park. The ditch at this time is to remain an open channel, again, for wildlife corridor and historic recognition.
I was gonna question about that, Jim. Have we given any thought to keeping that or removing that? And if so, if we're deciding to remove it, is that Englewood's responsibility? Is that our responsibility?
You asked about the flume or the flume?
The flume, as you'll hear, is one, one of the kind of primary questions for Littleton to answer over the next few months, um, as our staff has dug into it. There are questions, so they answer about, you know, cost and structural integrity and the idea, one of the ideas is that there could be a historic walk there that features and interprets what the ditch was. We're still exploring that, and you'll hear more from, from Brent in a couple of minutes about that option.
I thought it was gonna be a flume ride. I'm not.
Sorry, Robert.
Looking at the trees and vegetation in this project, so, uh, because we'll be going through some of these park areas, there will be some trees that have to be removed for construction. However, we're doing our best and our, our contractor will ensure we're preserving their, preserving trees wherever possible. In addition, some of the trees through these reaches are already invasive or they're unhealthy, and they might actually be removed through construction. And this is an item we're coordinating very closely with the city of Littleton on to figure out and address the loss of tree canopy.
So, in a situation like this, would you try to keep the, the pipeline exactly the way it is? I mean, I, we saw the diagram of where you wanna go, but where you're going down the, the same path as where it currently is, would you use that same, same ditch, I guess?
The idea is to bury the, in places buried in the ditch bed.
In the same ditch bed, perfect.
Did you get, I was gonna interrupt with a different question. So, but, so, all of these trees are used to getting water nine months out of the year. And so, my assumption is, is that I, that just the change in the availability of water is gonna lead to a big change in the, what is the appropriate, um, vegetation for that area? It's going back to semi-area, area.
Cactus in.
No, I, so, aroroc practice are great. I'm all, I'm all in for that, but I wanna, I mean, I, I just, we gotta be really careful about, I mean, if we throw a bunch of water-loving trees in there, it's not gonna help.
Yeah, so we're, I guess, to address your first question, there, you're right, those, so, a lot of those trees probably do take water from the ditch right now. However, there are other places where we've piped city ditch and the trees have remained alive just based on surface runoff and rain. And so, I think it depends on the trees and their health, and I'm not a forester, but I think there's a lot that goes into that. And, uh, and as far as how to address it, that's kind of an, a piece that we're still working on with Littleton, but we wanted you guys to know that we're working on that.
I mean, I feel like we've, we've said that maintaining the tree canopy in the city and growing the tree canopy is a priority, and so, just being thoughtful about this feels important.
Yeah, so, I don't think we'll necessarily wanna plant trees back on the city ditch where we don't have any water. We'll probably wanna locate trees in other areas where we have irrigation to try to, you know, replace that tree canopy elsewhere and not necessarily on the city ditch.
Great, thank you. Thanks for looking.
As we mentioned before, there's multiple places where stormwater goes into city ditch either through inlets or surface runoff, and through this project, we're coordinating the design so that we can remove, uh, that stormwater going into city ditch. And that's another piece we're working very closely with the city of Littleton on, and they've been... piece we're working very closely with the City of Littleton on, and they've been, we've been coordinating with them on the design and what the path forward is on that.
So how's that stormwater help with the taste of Inglewood water? Is that positive or negative?
We can give you some samples of our water if you want to come try. From a restoration perspective, we are going to be restoring per Littleton and Mile High Flood District standards, so that's another piece that does go through review with Littleton. And in vegetated areas, we would be seeding the ground, so it's not just gonna be dirt covering the pipe. And things that we impact, such as trails, we would be restoring to existing or better condition.
Could you spend a minute on just the types of vegetation, if you know those standards at all, Mile High or others?
So Mile High will have jurisdiction more in the creek crossings. And so what they've asked for, like legal, just quite improved as a creek crossing. So in that area, we'll just restore back what's there. And then at Slaughterhouse Gulch, they haven't given us a seed mix, but we will work with them on that. And then in the other areas that are City of Littleton, that would be a City of Littleton preferred seed mix, and we can vary that where needed. And then where we, in areas where we can't just seed, we would have blankets to manage that where the slopes are higher.
We'll be probably, I'm envisioning wild grasses. That's what, when you say seed mix, for people who might not know.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say probably dryland grass, like what's kind of out in Slaughterhouse Gulch now in that open area.
As I mentioned, there's been a significant amount of stakeholder engagement in this project that we've already done and that we're going to have moving forward. Looking at what those things are, we set up an Inglewood Engage website. It's a project website, so folks can go learn about the project, find information on it, and then we post updates as we have them. We also have held multiple public meetings in Inglewood and Littleton. And at our public meetings last spring, we also collected comments from the public. And there was a comment period, and people could submit comments either at the meeting or afterwards. They had a link that they could do that. Wherever feasible, we've been trying to incorporate that feedback into our design, and some of that is reflected in what we've talked about today. We've been working very closely with the City of Littleton on a number of pieces with this project, and will continue to do so. We've also been meeting with and coordinating with historic groups and also the South Platte Working Group. And we've been meeting with adjacent property owners who we know are most impacted by this project, both the current ditch and construction of it.
Could you summarize a little bit of these various groups have different interests? Can you summarize some of those groups and some of their interests? That's just the highest level.
Yeah, yeah. So the historic groups have interest in the ditch as, as the ditch is very old. As I mentioned, it's over 150 years old, and so there's interest in, from those groups in preserving and celebrating the history of the ditch. The South Platte Working Group has a number of stakeholders in it from, I guess, Littleton and Inglewood and a number of municipalities in the area. And they have interest in this project from a historical and recreational perspective, and so we've heard that perspective from them as well. And then property owners have had various perspectives on the project, both impacts to, you know, their properties now, what is construction gonna look like, what is my property gonna look like post-construction, that sort of thing. And so we've held both public meetings and individual meetings for those interested so that we can discuss those concerns with them. Does that interest you?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Yeah.
Have you thought about how to synthesize all that information so that everybody comes out a winner instead of winners and losers, so to speak?
Yeah, so we're, we've been tracking everything, like coordination with these different stakeholders. In particular, like we have a spreadsheet that we've been using to track all of the comments that we've received from the public. So that's something we've been working through. And then as we have meetings with our team, with the design team, with City of Littleton, these are items that we've brought up as we've discussed the different aspects of this project, such as the, you know, the flumes or the existing ditch. And those are being discussed, and wherever we can, we're trying to incorporate those, that feedback into the project. And some of it is challenging, because on some items, we've heard feedback both ways, that some people want the ditch filled, some people don't. And, you know, for example, but, so we're trying to find kind of a happy medium to what these folks are, are bringing to us. And some of that was shown in the alignment of the ditch, too, where we, we wanted to try to, especially in Reach Two, get away from a lot of the private properties and be considerate of their backyards and construction in their yard and future Inglewood maintenance running through their yard, as well as from the historic groups. There was interest in preserving open channel, and so where we could, we tried to do that on this project as well. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
For this project, we also developed a project fact sheet, and that went out with our initial public meetings. It's also on our Inglewood Engage website, and we've made it available to interested folks. And we're in the process of developing a fact sheet for what to expect during construction, which we're, we're currently working on what our strategy will be for communications during construction, but that's just one aspect of it. It will be some sort of fact sheet that people will, I think we'll probably mail it out, and they can see what to expect during construction. It'll talk about what the work's gonna look like and the timeline of it and that sort of thing. And in addition, we'll continue to update our website moving forward with that sort of information. Also on this project, we created a specific email inbox for the city ditch piping project where we can specifically address questions and concerns about the project, and so, and that's also helped us with our tracking of what people are bringing to us. Moving forward, we are finalizing our design, working on our, getting our easements and the permitting that we need for this project. We have ongoing coordination with the historic groups, City of Littleton, South Platte Working Group, and, and it's not listed here, but property owners and other interested stakeholders. And we're working on developing what that strategy is gonna look like for communication before and during construction. And I will pass it back over to Brent.
All right. So next steps for Littleton, we're going to come back and seek some direction from city council. I guess staff would recommend keeping city ditch from Leinhard Lake to Lee Gulch, because that's where existing stormwater comes into the city ditch and carries it to Lee Gulch. So the city ditch carries stormwater from Range View Gulch, and Range View Gulch is, it's the creek that runs to Ridgeview Park. So then the next thing is we want to do a, continue to do a cost and benefits analysis on Lee Gulch, Lee Gulch flume, to see if it makes sense to keep it. We want to make sure we do a structural analysis to make sure that, that it's sound and that it could be moved, or, you know, or if it's worth keeping, I guess, at that point. So Reach Three, that's the Slaughterhouse Gulch Reach. Same thing, we want to continue to do a cost and benefits analysis on the Slaughterhouse Gulch flume, on whether we should create an outdoor exhibit, or, you know, what we should do with the flume as far as the, the history of, of the city ditch flows. We're gonna continue to work with Inglewood on the loss of the tree canopy, and then we're gonna seek council direction for those portions of the city ditch that have been abandoned and that become our property. They'll remain, we are suggesting they remain open channel, and then we stabilize them next to the affected property owners. And it's our intent that the abandoned portions of the ditch be minimally disturbed to continue to be used by wildlife.
So I'll just underscore that I think the future discussions of the flumes, I think we are, we do have to make, make sure that we, we do fully understand the costs, liabilities of, of keeping them, and also the opportunities. We want to put a little more detail on the opportunities for the historic walk and interpretation of, of, you know, one or both of those, those flumes. These are properties that we have not owned in the past, so if we were to retain them or move them or do something with them, those would be, you know, new investments for, for the city. It's, it's, it's not just keeping what we've had. So that's kind of part, that's part of our, kind of, our consideration, and will be part of our recommendations to council. So in terms of process for council and for the, the public, we need to take some more time and keep, you know, we, we are studying these, these options. As council certainly understands, there are lots of projects and, and other priorities, things happening in the city right now coming to, ahead. So we are gonna take some time with, with this. We'd like to bring this back for further council discussion and potential direction in several months. In that time, we can, we can continue meeting with residents, doing this work. We also want to bring it back in a forum of a regular meeting where you can certainly, you can also hear from residents about their interests, their concerns and opportunities as you consider this, this further. So I believe, Mayor, that's, that's the staff's presentation tonight, and we'd love to hear any questions that you might have. We can follow up on further.
You know, it seems to me that most of this is on Inglewood, that the cost to do all of it, except potentially remove those flumes, if that's what's decided. Again, that might still be on Inglewood if we get ahead of it. Am I correct in that?
That was my question, too. Pretty much everything except for this slide, which is the flumes and the next steps after. I'm assuming it is all Inglewood expenses.
Yeah, so Inglewood is paying for the, the construction of the piping and.
The rehabilitation of where it's.
Yeah, the restoration afterwards and things like that. So the, yeah, the pieces we're still coordinating with Littleton on would be the, the filling of the ditch and the flumes and, and those pieces of it and what that looks like. And we've also been discussing the, how those relate to, or I guess, how those, along with the stormwater piece of the project, and how all of that kind of ties in together. So there's still discussions on it, but yes, primarily, this is an Inglewood ditch work project.
Along those lines, how much, what would be potential costs associated with adding the stormwater into the ditch?
So is it a huge expense? Is it, you know, the minimal? Do you remember what that cost was? It's like $375 for, for converting the ditch into just a stormwater channel from Leinhard to Lee Gulch?
So we, we estimated, or we had our contractor estimate after our 60% design, so.
Yeah, just rough, real rough.
Yeah, so after our 60% design, I think the cost estimate was between like $3,000 for the improvements for stormwater needed for this project.
Along with that stormwater question, if we. Under Reach Three, where there are private property owners, where we have this question of easement access being granted, one of the potential downfalls of granting it back to the property owners is that they could theoretically then fill in portions of the ditch. That's kind of eliminating the ability for it to be a stormwater conveyance facility. Has that?
Yeah, so for, for Reach Two, we would recommend that, that portion of, of city ditch be conveyed to the city as a stormwater conveyance instrument, I guess.
Right, and any part, portion of it that flows through private property.
Right, so then they couldn't fill it in until we found an alternative way for, for Range View Gulch to get to the plat.
Right. Was that the same case for Reach Three as well, or?
So Reach Three has minimal amount of stormwater that gets into it. There may be some runoff from the bus barn.
Okay. But it's, it's minimal enough to where if private property owners decided to, like if we stabilize our portion of the ditch, but other private property owners, minimal as they are, don't, it doesn't necessarily create a stormwater management issue on parts of the property.
I believe Reach Three is primarily already, the portion that Inglewood would not be putting our pipe in is primarily already on City of Littleton property, not on private properties. I think, I think it overlaps a little bit with the Littleton, the Bus Depot. But I believe out, I believe it's all outside of private property.
That's what I thought, but wanted to confirm, because I can't see parcel boundaries.
At Reach Two, at Reach Two, there's not a whole lot that really bisects private property. There's a few that are like right on the parcel line there, which, there's a couple that it cuts through a little bit more. It shouldn't be too difficult.
Are we gonna, are we essentially getting, not, are we getting two new parks that we need to maintain through the Lee Gulch and the Slaughterhouse? I mean, what are?
Already goes through our, that already goes through our.
But are we, I guess I'm, well, but, so for, for example, the, one of my concerns is people just using the ditch as a place to dump trash. And for now, there's some maintenance that Inglewood doesn't want the trash, and they're not confident, you put some effort to pull it out. But that, that reason for keeping trash out is, is gonna go away. I think keeping the ditch open as a, as a source of, as a historical thing is really important to me, but having it be, I mean, we, there's some, I think there's some increased maintenance costs that we have, or just efforts that we need to, and I think it's, and I look forward to hearing about that when we talk about the cost. And, because I think we need to, I mean, I, I think we're gonna end up spending money to maintain this space. And that's okay with me, but I want to make an informed choice.
Conceptually, I think what you'll, what we're trying to do is balance the opportunities to, to preserve some of the history of the ditch, some of the, some of the ditch, and be able to tell, tell the story of the ditch while also limiting those costs. We're trying to ma, make sure that we really understand those costs for maintenance, the risks and issues with the flumes, so that we can make sure that we can have some of the ditch and preserve some of the history while also minimizing those new costs. We want to make sure we fully, you know, know what they are.
Well, I mean, if we're making investments, and I hope we make investments into historical signage and those kind of things, particularly in Slaughterhouse Gulch, we're gonna, I think we're inviting more people to go there and use that space, and, and, which is a good thing. We want them to, this, this is, this is why Littleton exists, because Richard Little dug that damn ditch, or surveyed that ditch. And so, but, but having more people go to the park means the park needs more care and attention.
Couldn't we leverage our partners like South Platte Working Group and South Suburban? Would they help us with maintenance costs? Because if we decide they become more parks with interpretive signs and historic focus, so would we have to assume all the maintenance?
Question we'd have to look into further. I don't have that answered tonight. I did have some water from Inglewood last week. It was really bad. So I'm excited for you.
So last thing, we're concerned is the stormwater management piece, as you're kind of evaluating soil and soil conditions in terms of permeability and how much standing water essentially will sit. Like, I know this is personally something me and my neighbors care about, care about with regards to the High Line Canal, as obviously that is not being utilized in the way it used to. Is just mosquito abatement and the possibility for standing water, you know, staying for a prolonged period of time. So if you can kind of include that in some of your, you know, cost estimations to see if we need to dig it out or even just dredge the bottom of it to remove the fines and allow for that kind of permeability, that would be great.
And the cost that we look at.
I think Kelsey Stansfield has an answer to your question perhaps.
I just came up to add that all the parks that are falling along these sections of the city ditch are currently maintained by South Suburban and have been an active partner in this process as well.
Do you think if we enhanced, you know, had historic interpretive signs, that they would be on board with that?
Absolutely. We've already had discussions with them, and they're, they're ready to go to add signage, particularly in that Slaughterhouse Gulch Reach.
Any other questions, council? Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thanks. Good luck. Have another piece, Chuck? Do we know who gave? Do, do we know who gave me the, someone gave me these? Do we know that anybody does that?
Now you're receiving candy instead of?
Yeah, someone brought me candy.
Yeah.
Didn't realize you were taking donations now.
Well, I, it, it, uh, I mean, I guess I am.
It's just a ton of York Peppermint Patties and stuff. It's depressing. You don't, it was like one of my favorites.
We're just rotating for library up. Library crew is next.
Library is next?
Huh? According to the agenda, at least.
Would you like a piece of chocolate?
I'm fine, thank you.
Anytime. You've turned me down now, I think, two or three times. Are you not a chocolate eater? I don't eat sweets.
Yeah, not really. I know it's a little chewy, I just haven't.
Well, I, if I have a choice between having a couple chocolates now and a, uh.
Didn't know we had so much to drink tonight.
You haven't been to the museum and library? You haven't gone on the tour?
You haven't paid your dues, Mike. Gone on what? Which tours are you talking about?
Larry, oh damn, Larry.
Seen plenty, seen plenty of ditches. I've been in plenty of ditches.
I've dug a ditch or two in my day.
Isn't that your job now?
Yeah, kinda, yeah.
All right. The audience can please, uh, quiet down here. We're going to continue.
Speak louder, please. Yes.
Um, we have a library update here. So I'll turn over to, uh.
Thank you. Behind you.
Thank you, Mayor. As we pull up the AV magic tonight, uh, we're, we're focusing on our cultural amenities tonight, our library and our museum. These truly are treasures for Littleton and I think, you know, like all of these, these department overview presentations, we want to give council, you know, a kind of a reminder of all the services and all the, the value that these amenities bring to our community, all the, you know, really important services, and also a flavor for just what some of the projects and challenges are. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our library director, Dennis Quinn.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dennis Quinn. I have the privilege of serving as the city's library director since June of last year, uh, coming up on a year this summer. We're joined tonight by a couple of the leadership team from the library. Uh, we have youth services supervisor Val Fetters, system supervisor Rich Allen, and the immigrant resources supervisor Glossia Rabello. Sadly unable to join us tonight are our assistant circ supervisor Heather Poe, our adult services supervisor Stacy Walter, and our business support specialist Michelle Grabowski. That roster comprises the leadership team at the library under which the rest of our team reports. So glad that some of them could join to put faces with names. As anytime I talk about a library, um, I, with, at the risk of starting out philosophical, misty-eyed, I, I know a lot of us have plenty of memories, I'm sure, of what libraries looked like when we were, when we were young. And we challenge us to look at what the public library means for your community. Um, I think my friends from grounds have left, so I can borrow a metaphor from horticulture. It's kind of like, uh, if you have a plant and you're trying to care for it, it's the steady watering of the plant. It's the sunshine that feeds it day by day, so that over time you see the fruits and the benefits of those efforts. That to me is what a library represents, what a public library represents for the long-term health, not just of the individuals of the community, but for the community as a whole. And I hope that I get to share some of that with you tonight. We look at the library as sort of a playground for the mind or a park for the mind. It opens doors for exploration, for discovery, uh, for opportunity, for curiosity, and at the same time, you can look at it as sort of the living room in the community. It's a place where many from across the community who come from different walks of life encounter and meet and learn from each other. It's also a stage and a spotlight to showcase and celebrate what makes your community unique and special, and all of it in one forty thousand square foot building. How do we do all of that? Obviously, the functional work of the library is we provide access to information and experiences and resources for many who would not otherwise have access to them or wouldn't otherwise seek them out. We do that through our circulating collections, through the educational enriching programs that we offer, through access to equipment that has sometimes a high cost of participation, and in general, assistance in guiding and accessing information, navigating the technology landscape that we hear. The, the library that serves the City of Littleton has proudly been doing this for a hundred and twenty-seven years, from our humble roots as a, a lending collection in the, uh, the drugstore on Main Street, to a time that we spent in the building that's now Town Hall Arts Center, to the Carnegie Building at the end of Main Street, and now since nineteen sixty-five at our current home on Detoura Street, which as I mentioned, is a forty thousand square foot building that houses our circulating collections, study and meeting spaces, a technology studio, an art gallery, a team deck, dozens of computer workstations, plenty of casual seating areas, and nestled in between all of that, some office space for the staff that it takes to run the building. As a department of the city, the boundaries of Littleton are our official service population, but in practice, our services are generally open to all from wherever you come from. So as a result, a good portion of our users do reside and do, do have, do call Littleton their home, but most of our users come generally from the south metro area, though in the past twelve months, we have welcomed visitors from across the state, from as far away as Granada to Grand Junction to Greeley. That's a lot of stuff that we do. I could go down the list, giving you more stats, just to rattle off and dazzle you, but just to give you a sense of the pace of usage that we see, um, our circulated collection gets used over three hundred and sixty thousand times a year in physical formats, over two hundred and twenty thousand times in digital formats. We host over eight hundred programs a year that in twenty twenty-three were attended by more than seventeen thousand people. Our handful of meeting spaces were reserved more than two thousand times. Our computer workstations were used more than fifteen thousand times. Our Wi-Fi was connected over eighteen thousand times, and our team of thirty-four friendly, helpful staff assisted people with more than seventeen thousand one-on-one customer interactions of various natures, above and beyond just your basic self-checkout or checkout at the circulation desk. To give you a sense of what all that means and how we stack up against our peers in the state and across the nation, we tend to perform above average and per capita terms for a library serving a community of our size. Most of those measures that I gave you are in the sixtieth to eightieth percentile, comparing to other systems serving populations of about forty-five thousand. We are still working to return back to our pre-COVID levels. So these are not quite our target levels pre-two thousand twenty, but still we find ourselves performing fairly well among our peers in the public library sector. One thing that I find, or I have found in my almost ten months with the organization, we do a lot of stuff, and I just gave you some numbers about that, but one of the things that really sets us apart and is really a point of pride is how we approach that level of service and how we approach serving the individuals that we, that come through our doors and that we encounter in the community. We have a really strong point of pride in not only helping you find what you're looking for, but doing it in a very humble and a very empathetic and human-centered way. And we get good feed, we get strong feedback from a lot of our visitors year over year. Not to throw any of our peer library systems under the bus, but it's something that is really verbally.
Well, the bookmobile.
Is a, it is a very strong feedback, a strong theme in the feedback that we receive from our customers, and we're very proud of it. Um, and that's reflected in, uh, the mission and vision values that we show you on the screen, that we try to live every day, a commitment to doing public library in all these ways very well and doing it in a very empathetic and community relationship-focused way with a high attention to customer service. I'd also be remiss in recognizing that it takes more than just our staff and our budget to do what the library does. We, uh, through over the, uh, throughout the year, we partner with dozens of community organizations in the Littleton area, in the surrounding area, and some from across the Denver metro region, including some, uh, some of our, uh, state-level associations. The Colorado Association of Libraries is a large, a large network for a lot of our peers to continue to build their expertise and, and grow their professional involvement. So I'd be remiss in, if I didn't acknowledge that we didn't do it without helping participation from members of our own community. The transitions, how to make it hard for me to tell what the slides actually advanced. A lot of our efforts as the, uh, in terms of how they tie into the, the city's strategic plan, a lot of the obvious connections show up in, um, in the vibrant community with a rich culture. It's really easy to draw, to see those connections in terms of what we do and how we're supporting and advancing the city's mission. But I also want to take a moment to draw attention to how a lot of the smaller things that we do do also support the other five components of the strategic plan, if not as visibly as some of our other departments. A lot of what we do in making our businesses decisions in what services we offer, in what our terms of, uh, terms of access are, and who we partner with, in what resources we need to get the job done, we try to be sustainable and make sustainable decisions in what we offer. And also, at the fundamental, at the foundation of what we do is making, is granting access to, uh, to experiences and to resources that individuals wouldn't have or wouldn't have access to otherwise. So we're allowing people to participate in those experiences at a low cost or zero cost. We do have a lot, a large role that we can play and do play in supporting local businesses, supporting workforce development by giving people access to skills development and skills resources that would otherwise, otherwise be behind a paywall. We try to provide a safe environment, staffed with capable, uh, capable, a capable team of staff who are trained in safety and de-escalation practices. We involve our community through volunteerism, getting more eyes in the picture, more eyes on the environment. And we have a strong commitment to, to continual process improvement, staff development, training. We try to retain really qualified staff so that we can continue to provide the high quality of service that we do. And we're constantly checking our processes and checking our, evaluating our services to make sure that we're getting the most, that, really not that we're getting the most bang for our buck, but really the community is getting the most bang for the buck in the investment in the public library. Uh, some of the highlights from two thousand twenty-three, many of these will look familiar to you, uh, right off the bat. We're really proud to have the support and endorsement to launch our first bookmobile, which opens new, uh, it really expands our ability to stretch our services throughout the community, to reach constituencies that we haven't reached by requiring people to come to our building. Missing from this list, but that I, I shouldn't fail to mention is that we did remove overdue fines with support of council last year, which is a step in the direction of equity. Uh, our building, our building benefited from the replacement of our fire alarm system and our fire suppression system. Uh, we conducted a, uh, an ongoing collection inventory to make sure that our database matches what is actually present and actually known and actually in our system. We held our third annual one book, uh, which featured Robert Justice's book, They Can't Take Your Name, whose, uh, author, his author gala in, uh, in September was really well received and really well attended. Two of our library staff, uh, had the honor of participating in the Colorado Association of Libraries Leadership Institute, which feeds not only their professional development, but sets them up as next generation leaders of the library profession in our state and in our nation. We were honored to receive some stadium grant funding to help us expand into a new board game collection. And of course, my predecessor Nancy Trim, uh, said a fond farewell and received a fond farewell from the organization. I had the honor of succeeding her in the role of library director. So two thousand twenty-three was a notable year. Notwithstanding a month-long closure for methamphetamine decontamination, which I'm sure we all remember, I know the library staff really still remembers it. Two thousand twenty-four, looking ahead, um, again, without just reading down the list like I just did, some of the main themes in our efforts and our work plan for two thousand twenty-four is, uh, continuing to build and make the best use of our capacity. Right off the bat, we're really proud and grateful to be able to increase our staffing through the city's lodgers tax and through some, uh, some positions that became available in the general fund, a total of about, I think, two point eight FTE. We are, um, turning up, turning the lens on a lot of our processes and our inter-house programming offer, uh, offerings by incorporating more partners to help build out the picture and help enhance the picture, uh, the whole menu of offerings that are on, uh, on the menu at the library. Uh, we're looking to increase our outreach presence, utilizing our bookmobile and expanding our services for doorstep delivery through volunteer assistance. We are optimizing and automating a lot of our internal processes that are currently are very manual and very labor-intensive using automated technology platforms. One key example is the system that we're getting ready to, to migrate to that helps us manage our calendar events, event registration, and room registration and availability. A lot of those systems are very, are very hands-on and very labor-intensive, and we're really excited. I'm particularly really excited to jump onto a system that'll help us automate a lot of that and provide a better customer experience. We're looking forward to later this year completing some long-needed repairs to our elevator in the interest of accessibility. Uh, we're developing internal service plans. We're planning to go through a policy and, uh, policy and process review. And, uh, just to kind of wrap up our internal efforts, we're also, uh, working with our partner departments in Public Works and Museum, as well as others, to support the implementation of the Ketchering Gallup Park Master Plan, which you heard about at last week's meeting, and aiding in the development of the Arts and Culture Master Plan, which is our one item that we're most heavily involved with, that's, uh, in the top priority quadrant for the city's two to three-year initiatives.
Question on that.
Yes.
At our last meeting, uh, it came up that maybe to fill in library lane, and it was kind of something that hadn't been considered or didn't come to us, and then, uh, add parking along Detoura. What are your thoughts about that, just anecdotally? You know, at the library every day, how many, how much do people use library lane? Do you think there's a parking on Detoura? Just kind of your thoughts.
Sure, and, uh, I'll, I'll be, I'll be fair in answering because we haven't had a, I haven't had a full chance to discuss this with everybody who's involved. But as you say anecdotally, I can say that there are certain times of the week, Tuesday morning is one that comes to mind, Thursday morning is a close follower, when we have our, a lot of our storytimes as times in the week where anecdotally staffs experiences that if there's ever a time when the parking lot is full and parking has to spill over onto library lane and Detoura, those are two times in the week when that does happen. To be fair, we have not done a comprehensive study, so I don't have a solid base of data to really inform that decision. We're still considering that, um, that consider, taking that option into consideration, but that's what we've experienced, at least from the library side.
That helps about, um, that didn't come up about the peak times. And then if something like that ever happened, would there be a place to book drop? You know, I mean, I'm one that slides in, you know, throws the book in and, you know.
Gently places it on the conveyor.
Throws it, sure.
You drop it in.
The library, Councilmember Grove.
Drop it in.
It's a new meaning to throwing the book at us.
Yes, uh, in other words, if something happened, would there be a place that, like, would there be a book drop somewhere?
That is, that's an option that we could consider. We don't, we don't have any other alternatives like that in place right now.
Right, and you don't need it because you can just pull it. I just, something to consider, like, South Carolina Library has one in there.
Yes.
You know, it's kind of offsite. They have one onsite too, but, okay, thank you.
There's plenty, there's plenty of solutions to that. There's plenty of solutions to that spillover effect that we're aware of in the field. We just need to consider those as we're, as we're weighing all the other options.
Thank you, Brian.
Sure, certainly.
Has there ever been any thought to book drops elsewhere besides at the library?
Here at the museum, so Tim can get books as well, so he's not paying attention, so I'll throw the ones that.
Does Tim have enough books over at the museum?
Probably not.
Right, um, I, I have to confess, uh, being, being so new, All right. I, I have to confess, being, being so new, I don't know truly how thoroughly that's been discussed thus far. But like I said to Councilmember Grove, if, if the need arose either through demand or as a result of the master planning process, it's certainly something that we could explore. We are aware of that being one of the side effects of us having one physical location in the community. The bookmobile lets us bring some of our services out, but it doesn't really serve as a book drop location. I, I take your point kindly.
I also have a question from the previous slide.
Yes.
The no fine policy, how is that working? Are you getting your books back? Is it effective? Was it a good decision?
My short answer is it has not negatively impacted our return rate. It has only positively impacted our customer relations, which was the, which was the desired effect.
Made me happy.
Yeah.
Did you have some outstanding fines there?
I have to change that.
Dennis, does the library take donations, book donations?
We do. It ebbs and flows as we have stopped, we have limited space for storage. So we, in partnership with many of our volunteers and members of the Friends of the Library Museum, we have sometimes have to turn away donations if we're sitting at capacity and getting ready for a book sale. But in general, yes, we do take donations of gently used materials in certain times.
Thank you.
Playboy, she wants to go.
We may need to help you find a different location for that.
Thank you for the guidance.
Continue, Dennis, just gladly.
Just ahead, just as a, as a heads up, as we're looking beyond 2024 into 25 in the future, I wanted to bring your attention to some, some items that you'll be likely hearing more about as we, as we move forward. One is that we're due to update the library's departmental strategic plan, which will be informed by a nestle underneath the city's strategic plan and play nicely with that. But the current one is termed through 25, so in 25, we're due to be doing some work to figure out what the next phase will look like for the library. And as the city and other department, as our, some of our colleagues, we're working through facility master planning efforts. The library will be an active participant in that, in those processes. Our currently, our current facility is well-loved by the community and has been for a long time. It's a point of pride, but the honest fact, the honest truth is also that it is six years old and it is showing signs of age. As we continue to have to refit and retrofit and outfit building systems, we keep having to counter and compensate for the many renovations that have been added on to it thus far, compensating for increasing gaps in age of systems, which is putting more stress on the building. All that to say, as we work through facility master planning processes, I and my team and my colleagues will be looking for a long-term holistic solution that will solve not just the existing problems, but also provide a platform for what the community will need from its library in the years and decades to come. So.
Are you talking not a remodels, like a brand new building?
We don't have a plan for that yet. That's what, that's what I'm hoping will come through the facilities master planning process. We'll go through, we'll, I would assume at least through a strategic plan and through the facility master plan process, we'll do some needs assessments and lots of study and analysis on what the right solution would be, whether it's a, whether it's a, another renovation or whether it's a more comprehensive or more extensive approach. We don't know yet.
It seems modernizing, you know, the library in 1965 and the library today is like very different.
It is. You're not wrong. You're not wrong. We're still very early in those conversations and a lot is not known, except some of the issues that we're seeing right now. That's what's driving.
If Council has not been on a tour of the library, I would strongly encourage it.
Would happily welcome.
And you would also get some, a feel for some of the challenges.
Yes.
You can write the book conveyor belt. It's not rated for a human trafficking.
I'm sure it's never happened. If not, hello.
You cannot run.
It didn't just come from.
I'm not. Unless I'm there.
We'd love to have you anytime. That concludes the content of my presentation. I'm happy to entertain any further questions.
The digital services that you offer through things like Libby and Hoopla.
Yes.
How, I, I take that you have kind of measurements of utilization of those tools. Are you feeling like you're kind of reaching the limits of current subscription models? I feel like there are times when, you know, you go to check something out, for example, on Hoopla and it's tied to like a specific library.
Mike, can you close the door for us?
Thanks.
Tied to a specific account where you reach a maximum limit of like checkouts or something like that. So has that come up before? Do you feel like we have sufficient digital access services to the content?
We, so you're talking about Hoopla and a similar platform that we use is Canopy, which offers streaming video. Those are two of our services, and I believe the only two services that are metered access. The, the price base, in short, the pricing structure to us for those, for those services is we pay a flat. We pay an amount that allows us a certain amount of usage, which is why after a certain point in the day, especially if a lot of people have been using it, you run into that error message that you've seen. So we are, we are looking into what it would take to, to right-size our, our capacity on those services. That said, Libby as an example, a lot of our research databases, they are not metered access in general. And so we don't really, we don't get that kind of feedback for those.
Correct. Okay. So, but you are looking into seeing like what, you know, capacity you could get to at what price point to, for those metered access ones.
Yes. And, and for a lot of our, for our other online offerings that are sort of more database structured, that we, that we pay individually for, we do a similar evaluation where we look at how much it's getting used, how much it's costing, sort of weigh the, weigh the field and sometimes make decisions to end certain subscriptions and initiate others. So.
So we can't get a city Netflix account and chip the password with the entire community, right?
Just because you. Can I? And then would it be a good idea as I'm, as I'm looking at our deputy city attorney?
I, you know, I, yeah, blame, blame the attorney. I mean, I feel, first of all, Val is why I am here, quite frankly. My wife started coming to the children programming with our children 18 years ago. And my wife said, oh, I like this neighborhood. And that's why I'm here now. So it's your.
It's your fault, Val.
Thank you for that. So thank you. So I, I mean, I feel like the conversation we had last week about the Kettering Gallup Park plan is centered, centered the library and the museum is kind of our, kind of cultural center point for the city. And I think you guys are, are very important to us. I think the city is changing slowly. I think demographically we're changing. And, and so I'm really excited about your strategic planning efforts. And I hope, as, as my questions kind of reflected, I look forward to you guys thinking about how we serve the new and changing, ever-changing Littleton. So.
Absolutely. We look forward to it as well.
Great.
I have a question about eBooks and the, you know, electronic streaming services. I've read that it's, it's more expensive where a book might be a sunk cost, maybe you have to replace some of them, some of them or whatever. You have to renew the eBooks and the, and the streaming. Is that impacting the budget or do you see that impacting the budget over the long run?
It's, I would say it's not impacting us at Bemis necessarily any more than it's impacting other libraries generally. That what you're, what you're talking about is a, it's a longstanding issue with, with publishers and licensers of digital platforms. It's no secret that publishers charge, charge a library a multiple of what it would cost you to buy an audiobook on Audible yourself, because they know that we get more usage out of it. That's a whole soapbox that I'll shortcut for now. But one thing that we have going for us and that really helps us in this field is our participation in a statewide network, statewide consortium that lets us pool our resources with other libraries to offer a broader eBook collection than Bemis would be able to on its own dime. Right now we have about 56,000 titles, both in, in digital text and digital audio. We would, it would take us years to get to that scale on our own dime. So that helps us expand our offering by pooling our resources with our statewide partners.
And it's more time intensive and cost intensive to do that with physical books to have. If you can do share books like that with different libraries, but you actually have to go there where the digital actually saves time.
And we do also do, we do also participate in resource sharing with the statewide courier. But to, to the mayor's point, if you have ability to use digital, then it's a lot faster. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Welcome to Littleton. Glad you're here.
So am I.
All right. Well, now on to the main event.
Sorry, I heard, I thought I heard Jerry's voice.
Yeah, I heard Jerry's voice saying that. The comedy show will begin now, no? So we have our, our museum update.
Yeah. I'll just say, Tim Nams has been here longer than the 10 months.
Longer than the city ditch.
But I will just, you know, give credit that the museum that we have and the attraction that it is, is attributable, you know, to Tim's leadership and the team that, that works there. And it's exciting to see how they are innovating and how they are thinking about the future. And so without saying more, I'll let Tim say more and turn it over to Tim.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm Tim Nams, the museum director. I have not been here longer than the city ditch. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. It's close.
Joined at the table today by our deputy director, Becky Coswell. I think most of you have had a chance to meet her. If you haven't, Becky's been with us for almost 15 years in a variety of positions. She has excelled in every one of them. And so we promoted her to deputy in December. And I am very happy to share the leadership of the museum with Becky. She's done a fantastic job. She's going to be driving the PowerPoint this evening. So her main goal will be to jump in if I roll and run off the rails at any point. I'd say it's possible.
She's accustomed to that.
It's not, it's not something she hasn't done before. It's always a challenge and a privilege to follow my, my friend from the library. I did not realize I was going to be adding include book drop in the museum's physical plant until tonight. But, you know, we roll with the punches.
Thank you.
And actually, we are always happy to help out our colleagues across the street. So if that was something that would be helpful, we, we might have a little more application or opportunity to do something like that. So always, always happy to think outside the box in that regard. So as you know, I think the museum has been here in Littleton for 54 years. We are the primary repository of history, art and culture in Littleton. And I would say now in the region, since the new building went in in 2004, and we still refer to it as the new museum. It is 20 years old now, which is hard to believe, unless you're trying to cobble together the HVAC systems, which are rapidly reaching end of life. But we'll talk a little bit about that as we, as we move through the evening. One of the things that we have really been pleased about was our ability to cast the net a little more broadly in terms of audience participation. Primarily, our audience is still drawn from Littleton and from our immediate suburb environs. But we also pull strongly from the seven county metro area, all across the metro area and really kind of 100 mile radius up and down the I-25 corridor, yeah, 70 corridor. So we're, we're reaching into the mountains, out onto the plains and then up and down, as I said, the, the I-25 corridor. So that was the goal of a previous council and they did the, the large expansion with our museum. And certainly I think that goal has been met. We have increased our, our attendance pre-COVID from about 100,000 a year to almost 150,000 a year as an average. I think that has been, has been well received by the community at large. Let's go ahead and jump to the mission, vision, values. This is really in keeping with the, the history of the museum. We have always seen ourselves as a, as a welcoming environment for our community and now for our larger community. And that's really reflected in what we are trying to do at the museum in terms of our exhibits, our programming and our daily operations that, that we do for the benefit of our community and for, for all of our visitors. We do that primarily by having what I think is the best museum staff in the country. Certainly the best I've ever worked with, top to bottom. They are really first rate. I think we're, we're unique among museums. You generally see professionals in the museum field, you know, moving fairly regularly throughout the, throughout the country. Usually it's an opportunity maybe for a lateral move, for a better road upward. Here in Littleton, we are very fortunate to have really long tenured staff members. And I think that is reflective of the support we have from city council, from city management, and really from the community feels a deep personal investment in, in our, all of our cultural amenities. Certainly the museum and the library are among those. 2023 was a big year for the museums. We continued to try to bounce back from the pandemic. I mentioned we were running about 150,000 a year prior to, to COVID. That number dropped down to a two-year average of about 55,000 during 2020 and 2021. We were back at almost 124,000 last year, so we are at 91% of where we were pre-COVID. So making a good climb back. We're still not quite there. But one of the things I've been really pleased about has been the advent of our virtual programming, which started with virtually zero prior to, to COVID. Within two weeks of closing down to the public, we rolled out our first set of videos that were maybe not the highest quality, but they certainly reflect a lot of effort and learning on the part of, of the museum staff. Those have just gotten better as we've, as we've moved forward. We've augmented those now with gallery walks, exhibit tours that are virtual, curator chats, just a variety of things that have been very well received from the community. And really, I will say it was largely in, in a response to a real call from the community asking for, for educational content while the schools and particular were closed down. So we're happy to be able to answer that call. I think we also were able to learn some new skills ourselves and in doing so really broaden the reach of the museum. 2023, we also, working with our partners at Public Works and in finance, accelerated the replacement of some of our major HVAC systems. As I mentioned, those are all about 20 years old and, and just on, on, on perfect harmony, they started failing at the same time. So many thanks to, particularly to Public Works, who were able to accelerate a lot of those processes. Becky runs our operations team at the museum, our facilities team. And they really did a really good job of working, working with Public Works and making all of those things, a lot of those things happen. We're now on, on schedule to have replaced a number of them last year, several more this year. And then in 25 and 26, we'll, we'll round out the last of those, of those systems. So.
How many are we talking about?
Well, we're talking about two showers, boiler, an H, a humidification system, four rooftop units. So those are the big ones.
And those will last for another 20 years? Is that what they are now?
That's, you know, the new ones that they're bringing in, maybe even have a slightly longer life than that. I think when we, when we built the museum in 2004, you know, it's kind of standard life was 15 to 20 years. We're kind of at the, at the outside of that envelope. But what we're hearing is that they might be more in the 25 to 30 year windows. So hopefully we'll get, we'll get more life out of them too.
I know, I know the main building gets all the attention, but how about the outbuildings? All the other buildings are, are those in pretty decent shape?
They, they are, they are, they are because we, we keep a real close tally of what their conditions are. We re-roof a number of them. We've got two roofs coming this year for a couple of our historic buildings. We re-roofed the collection center two years ago, Becky.
So hail damage by any chance?
Hail damage on a couple of those. And one of Becky's team members, our facilities manager, did a great job of working with.
Sure.
Yeah, with risk management and insurance to get almost all of those covered and paid back. So that was a nice win for the city as well.
Hail damage would be historically significant, appropriate for buildings of that, that style for that period?
It would be. It doesn't make the leaks any more attractive though. So, so we do try to keep on top.
So are the tornadoes, but we're not going to.
Fair point. Yeah, we do try to avoid those. In the meantime, full calendar of community events, exhibits and programming. I think everyone's kind of familiar with what, what we do and how we do it. But those continue to be huge draws. And in particular, as we look at ways to, to be more inclusive, we look at some of our, our large specific, our large special events. In particular, our Harvest Festival tends to draw most of our, of our, probably our biggest and most diverse crowd from around the metro area. And then of course, on a daily, our historic farms are constantly doing programming. And that's probably where we see the, the biggest move in terms of our young families coming through to, to see the animals, see the livestock, watch our interpreters interact with, with animals and with, with the farmland. So that's always a, that's always a fun treat if you have a chance to see, see some of our second graders coming through for their, for their day on the, on the farms. And then finally, a lot of work with the Arts and Culture Commission, soon to be the Arts and Culture Board. We had our first year of revenue from the lodgers tax, brought in about $912,000 of new money that we've never had before to, to support and sustain arts and culture in our community. So worked closely with the board and then with council to develop recommendations on how to, how to distribute that money throughout the community. And we're already hearing, even though checks just went out in January, we're already hearing back from a lot of our partners throughout the community about how impactful that has been already, just in a couple of short months and what they're, what they're going to be able to do. The, the mantra of the Arts and Culture Board was to help organizations take that next step. And that's what we're seeing and will continue to see this year as we, as we work through the reporting process with them.
Tim, what was the, the majority of that money dispersed out to the different organizations or was it 50% of it?
So we, we divided it, we had, we had a formula. We divided it up. We did $100,000 each to the big four, which is the library, the museum, Hudson Gardens and Town Hall Art Center. So those were the big four. About $250,000 went out to 30 grant applicants last year. So those were small and mid-sized organizations throughout the community. The rules were they either needed to be in Littleton or they need to be providing significant services in Littleton. And so that's what we were seeing through that, through those.
That caused about 650. Where was the other?
Then we did, we had 125,000 that went to tourism and, and tourism marketing. So Kelly Nardi's department is, is managing those, those funds. And then we had about, it ended up being about $70,000 that were for the Culture and Arts Partners Group, the mural program, and we also are commissioning an, an Arts and Culture Master Plan this year that we'll talk about a little bit later. So, so that was, that was how we, how we distributed the 900. I think it sort of ended up being about $950,000.
Is that the plan going forward to sort of keep that same?
Yeah, that's, that's the same formula that, that we're, we're looking at. Jim and I talked about a couple of months ago that at this point, we, we did tweak it a little bit for, learn from some, some things from last year's run through. But I think, I think it was largely successful. The feedback we've gotten from the community has been very positive. So we will continue to revisit the, the policy every year. And if we're going to make major changes, we'll come back to council and, and request your, your approval for something like that. But at this point, it seems to be working well within the community.
And that was one question I meant to ask Dennis. I don't know if you want to come back up. I asked both of you, for your portions of the lodging tax, how, how do you see that moving forward being impactful as time? Are there certain places you wanted to go?
Absolutely. On, on the museum side, it was tremendously impactful because we were able to add our first staff person in since 1994. So we added a facilities maintenance technician. One of the things that we have, it's kind of been to play out to Patrick's earlier comment, the ongoing repair and maintenance of our facilities is, is one that we take very seriously. But it was a huge, we were developing a huge backlog. So this gives us an opportunity to really attack that. We had hoped to be able to add a second position when we thought the revenue was going to be a little higher than that. We weren't able to do that. So, so we will be, will be continuing to look for ways if we're able to add more revenue.
So is that funding from that every single year going to that position then?
That, that is my intention is to continue funding that position.
One of the questions that I had when we were doing this months ago was just about how that position would impact offerings to the public. I understood, you know, the facilities, but if you could spend just a minute on that, because I, I know it's magnified your, your ability to really offer more programs.
Yeah, it really has because one of the, one of the, the offshoots of not having enough staff in our facilities and maintenance areas, we had other staff members who had to kind of fill in those areas. So this has given us an opportunity to return core staff members back to, you know, forward-facing activities with our, with our, our public. So that's, that's. programming, it's special events, it's adding more time in the exhibit world. So it really, the ability to take some of the, you know, non-core responsibility tasks off of a plate where they didn't really belong, but we had to have some someone doing them, that's probably been the biggest impact and the one that's most front-facing for our public.
In like so many ways, the library story is really similar to the museums. All, the entirety of our lodgers tax funding also went to personnel to fill, to provide permanent support for areas that had other, would otherwise have been sort of cobbled together from other other staff positions. One of those was sustained funding for our bookmobile coordinator. We, in the first year of that program, we realized how much a really successful bookmobile needs a team member dedicated to it, for it to to fully serve. And we're glad to use the lodger's tax to fund that position for the foreseeable future, as long as it continues to bring in the level of revenue that it does. In addition to that, we're able to increase staffing on the circulation team side by adding a couple of positions and increasing hours for one, and taking our part-time communications specialist that's housed in the library and make it a full-time position. Because otherwise, we really were sort of had our hands tied in sort of how we marketed what we had to offer to the public. So again, expanding capacity to either provide or increase awareness of our services among the public and not be sucking demand and capacity from existing staff positions. So yes, the plan for us is for the foreseeable future, as long as we have funding available from that source to continue using for those for those positions.
Okay. And I think it's just as we do with the three A funding to let the community know where those dollars are going, I think it's important that we get out that information in the communication office. Hey, this is how the services have been expanded at the museum and library across the state. Great. Thanks.
Just two more little quick points on this. I would note that the mural program, we were able to install two murals last year, one on Town Hall Art Center, one on Littleton Ballets. And both of those are nice additions to kind of the downtown corridor, a little bit, little bit expanded downtown corridor. And we're looking at one going in in the next couple of months, probably at an LPS facility, and then possibly enough funds to do a second small mural this year. So we're hoping to be able to get two this year. CAP continues to really go strong. That is probably the, one of the more exciting pieces of what the Arts and Culture Board has been able to do. It really is bringing together the stakeholders within the arts and culture community, providing them an opportunity to network, work together, build relationships, expand programming. A lot of our grant applicants come out of the CAP program. And then finally, the State of the Arts event. I think most of you are going to be there tomorrow night at the museum where we are able, I'm sorry, the mayor couldn't join us, but I'm, but excited to have everyone from council who's able to attend. I know Jim's playing.
Everyone who matters. Counsel, if you can attend, that's what we're saying.
Specifically not going to say that. The mayor votes on my budget, too.
He puts it on the agenda.
True. Jim and Mike are planning to be there. So we're really pleased to have so many coming. I think we've got about a hundred and fifty RSVPs the last couple of years. I think we had fifty the first year, seventy-five last year. And I don't kid myself. I know part of the draw is the fact that we're giving away the first, or giving out the first ever Littleton Arts and Culture Award to a very worthy recipient tomorrow evening. One of the things that we've really worked to do is to align ourselves with council strategic framework. I mean, clearly vibrant community and rich culture is one that really is in our wheelhouse. So most of our pieces fit nicely in there. We've already talked about programming demonstrations. One of the things that's very exciting is we're working on a concept master plan this year for the Littleton History Exhibit. That is the the main history gallery in the in the museum. We haven't done a major reworking of it or revisioning of that space since the museum was built. So again, twenty years out. So this is, this is a great opportunity for us to refresh that space, really look at the storylines that we've been telling, and then augment those with new storylines. One of the things that we heard from our focus groups throughout the community last year and the year before, as we were going through the the public engagement piece, was how much they wanted to hear stories they hadn't already heard. So underrepresented communities, underserved communities, that's an opportunity for us to really broaden our reach again. And we're excited to be able to do that, too. At the same time, we're going to be working with the Arts and Culture Board on an Arts and Culture Community Master Plan. We'll talk a little bit about that more on another slide, but that was one of the things that we talked a bit about at the council retreat a few a few weeks ago. And I think that will be a great opportunity to really do an inventory of where we are here in Littleton for the first time ever. And then finally, continuing to move forward with the mural program, Culture and Arts Partners, and the State of the Arts Annual Event. We're also working hard to try to be more sustainable. So Becky and her team have been really looking and really focusing with our Public Works Partners on higher efficiency replacements, longer-lived replacements. So those will be opportunities to really improve, hopefully, cost efficiency and energy efficiency for the museum. Robust and resilient economy. You know, one of the things I think we kind of forget about is what a draw cultural assets are, like the museum and the library, Town Hall Art Center, Hudson Gardens. We're doing a two hundred thousand visitors annually between in-person and virtual. And I think that we've really grown into a tourism destination that that is bigger than than we ever really thought. In addition to the radius that I mentioned a little while ago, last year, the last time we did a zip code study, I think we also had twenty-five other countries represented in our visitorship. So I think that's also an opportunity to introduce folks to how special a place Littleton is. And then just in keeping with that, quality of life assets like the museum and the library and some of our other partners in the arts and culture community really are our economic engines for our Littleton businesses. We hear it particularly from our downtown friends, but I think it actually works throughout the throughout the community, and particularly as we are adding more hotels as well. And as I mentioned, for the first time ever, almost a million dollars, the city of Littleton is investing in local arts and culture tourism. So that's tremendously exciting to be working in that area. Safe community. We have a couple of things. We're working with our partners at LPD, in particular, Chief Stevens and Division Chief Enley, to update our museum emergency plan. This one has been updated in the last twenty years, but it's always one of those things that needs to be revisited. And particularly as we move towards reaccreditation, that will be something that will be a big focus because it is for every public facility these days, it has to be. And then just a really strong sense of community act, of community investment on the part of our residents. That's, that's one of the things I think was most gratifying for us during COVID was just hearing from the public how much they missed us, how much they needed us, how much they wanted us to come back better than ever. And I think that that probably was what sustained us through a lot of the hard days. When, when, when you think about it, we're about two years out from reopening after being closed fully or partially for two full years. So March of twenty twenty, we closed. We thought it might be about two weeks. It turned into two years. So having the community behind us, I think, was hugely important for staff morale. And I think, I think we also helped to kind of build that sense of community as well. And as we move into high, high-quality governance, you know, one of the top issues that we're going to deal with at the museum, we are back up for our reaccreditation cycle. It says twenty twenty-six. That's actually when it's awarded. We'll be working. We just got, we just actually have the self-study portal for the museum opened about a month ago. So we will be working on that for the next eighteen months. We'll talk a little bit more about that on another slide. But that's, that's really kind of the gold standard for museums around the country, is our credit.
How often is it reaccreditation every ten years?
Ten years for the museum. Yeah.
Eighteen percent of your time is percent, or eighty percent would be, yeah.
Chief Stevens will tell you that it's much rougher, that what LPD has to go through every three year, three years, I think it is. But he's probably not correct about that.
Yeah.
And then finally, as Dennis mentioned, for the library, the museum also has a real commitment to professional development and training. It's one of the reasons that we are able to retain our staff and continue to grow and expand their skill sets. And that's certainly something we appreciate about the city of Littleton, about Jim's management and council's support for ongoing training and development. So highlights in twenty twenty-four. We already talked a little bit about the concept master plan for the Littleton History Exhibit. That's one we're going to be working on, we think, throughout this year. We did have a delay last year on this, trying to work, working with with our friends in procurement, trying to get everything squared away. We have dumped, jumped into this at this point, so we're, we're making good headway. This will probably run through the gamut of this year. And then we do have funding in place this year, which we will encumber into next year to do the design phase. So that will be the the next building block in developing this. And from that, we will be coming, we'll, we'll get a number of what it looks like to do a rebuild and a revisioning of that space. That will come back to council then for probably, I would guess, probably the twenty twenty-six or twenty-seven budget. But that's, that's a ways out. And we have a lot of homework to do in the meantime. One of the things that Becky brings to the team is a real commitment and knowledge of project management. She is a certified SCUM master.
You play with me?
Sometimes I say certifiable, but I won't do that tonight. I guess I just. It's fun to get that in anyway. But in any event, this is, this is something that we're really excited about and has been a tremendous boon for the museum. It really has helped us to manage our time. It really has helped us to focus on the processes involved in all of the work that we're doing, but in particular, events, exhibits, programming, long-term goals, strategic planning. Since Becky introduced SCUM to us three years ago?
Two years.
Two years ago. We have not missed a deadline and we have not gone over budget on any of our projects. So we think it works well. And in fact, Becky has been working with a couple of other departments to potentially introduce SCUM to what they're doing. So.
What is SCUM?
They'll put their heads together and they will go back and forth until. Different SCUM, Mayor.
It's a, it's a framework for project management, comes from a rugby teacher where the entire team works together to get the ball across the line. A lot of backlogs, a lot of meetings. They're short and sharp, you know, what the priorities are and when to work on them. So you are delivering valuable work when it should be delivered.
Really a great team-building framework as well, because it really gives everyone a sense of what the rest of the team is working on, where their potential roadblocks are, where they may need help. And if they need help, they're able to ask for it in a, so. It's been great for the museum so far. Let's go ahead and jump since we'll talk about reaccreditation here. I mentioned gold standard of museum accreditation, the American Alliance of Museums, this is our umbrella organization from across the country. There are about thirty-three thousand museums in the country. There are just under eleven hundred that are accredited, so zero point zero three percent. We are one of them. We've been accredited since nineteen seventy. So we're also one of the longest accredited museums in the country. And it is a, I mean, it is an absolute in-depth review of everything that we're doing, our core documents, our processes. There'll be a site visit from museum professionals who will come out. We'll do stakeholder interviews. I'm certain that a number of you will be on those interviews if you're available. But it is, it is a tremendous opportunity to take a look at how you do what you're doing and how effective it is. For years, because we've been accredited for so long, for years, I have referred to it as the colonoscopy of the museum discipline. It's not much fun while you're going through it, but it's really important. Chief Stevens is now stolen.
I've never heard Chief Stevens say.
Chief Stevens has now stolen my line, so I am going to demand royalties at some point. But he's hard to negotiate with. He has a gun. In any event, it runs about eighteen months and it's every ten years for the, for the, in the museum world. So we'll be rolling into accreditation. But we're all, we're already getting a start. We have our annual conference, AAM Conference, coming up in May. And Becky and I will be meeting with our accreditation officer in Baltimore to chat about just exactly what has changed. But, you know, it is a lot of work, but it's important work. So we're always excited to jump into it. And then finally, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about our Arts and Culture Master Plan. Dennis mentioned this a little bit ago. He also referenced the Arts and Culture Facility Master Plan that's coming out of Public Works, that the library and museum will be helping with as well. But this, I think, was the, was the topic of conversation at the, at the retreat a few weeks ago. Because we do tend to have a lot of master plans going on in the city, we've got several just at the museum. But this one is, is really sort of the overarching, community-wide master plan. So this will be, in fact, we just posted for the, for the RFP a week and a half ago, so just yet on the fifteenth. So, so we'll be bringing in a consultant to work with the Arts and Culture Board and the museum staff, library staff, and other partners to develop this plan. It's really, probably the shorthand version is it's going to be an inventory and what we have already in the community, and it needs assessment of what the community is looking for. And I think it will really inform us, particularly with the lodger's tax as we go forward. It's one, as again, we've never done one of these in Littleton, so I think it's, I think we're in a good position to be able to bring this forward to council, help you with your visioning as you're starting to look at, at how to prioritize arts and culture. Our timeline, we talked a bit about this at the retreat, but Q1, we've got the draft going out and the RFP, or the RFP going out, rather. Qs two through four, we'll be working with a consultant to put this together. The deliverable is to be back to the museum staff by mid-December. And then in the first quarter, we will be working with Arts and Culture Board to put a finished product in their hands and then bring it to council at, at Jim's convenience for a study session with city council. But we're excited to work on this. We think this is going to be a really important stepping stone for arts and culture writ large in our community.
So we saw their master plan. How's it different? I mean, is it updated, the master plan?
That was the Ketrane Gala.
Ketrane Gala, entirely, entirely different.
Totally different.
No, but, but Arts and Culture came with a master.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Pam. A strategic plan.
Right, right.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's Arts and.
Sorry, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry. Yeah, the Arts and Culture Commission brought in their new strategic plan to you last year. The, the main action item, the main work item in that was, was this Arts and Culture Master Plan. So it is, it is job number one in the, in the commission's strategic plan.
Tim, I might characterize that as, what we saw was the plan for the Arts and Culture Board and what they were going to do. They are planning with staff support to facilitate a master plan for arts and culture for the community. So.
And your master plan, how does that integrate?
The one we're working on is a master plan just for one, one of our exhibits, one of our galleries.
How, but I want to.
Yeah, not this, but.
But how will those two things interact?
I think, I think that the, that ours will inform the Arts and Culture Master Plan to some extent, particularly in terms of audience segment. And I think the Arts and Culture Master Plan will inform ours to some extent, because I think it is going to talk quite a bit about what the needs are within the community. So I think there'll be some significant overlap.
Which is the one true master plan.
Well, it sounds like one is for the board, one is for the museum, and one's for the exhibits, but they all coordinate, which is appropriate.
Yeah, they're, they're all going to be very much interlocking.
I will say, I give Tim credit for pointing this up. Tim and Dennis, both staff the Arts and Culture Board. Tim has led for the last few years there. So this is coming up, and it's important that we talk about it in the context of the museum. But it really is a separate effort that will engage the whole, the whole community and go much, much beyond the museum and the library and talk about performing arts and graphic arts and how it integrates downtown and how all we, how it all works together for Littleton. So.
That's this plan.
That's this plan.
This plan.
This plan. And this plan is the ACC plan or your plan?
Their, their strategic plan said to do this for the entire city to have a master plan.
Right.
They're looking at the, just the, the museum is just doing a plan for just that one exhibit.
So you're doing, so there's not three plans? There's two?
There are three plans.
We started small. We started small with museum, exhibit.
Okay, I get that.
Then, you know, the AC, the ACB now has done work over the past couple of years and had some strategy for how they were going to develop and facilitate arts more broadly. Now they recommended to council and are implementing this plan, which is really the Arts and Culture Plan for the community, how it integrates with the economic development plan that you saw a few weeks ago, and how it will, how it will drive that creative economy for Littleton as we go forward. So this is the largest plan. Tim has been a leader and will work with Dennis to facilitate the Arts and Culture Board as they move through this process.
So this is the overall, then there's the board, and then there's your individual.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to describe it. I think it's, I think it's, yeah, kind of different levels, but this, this is, this is the top, will be the top. And Jim did a much better job explaining that than I did.
You got baby shark.
So I did not think we were going there.
I encourage you not to pick up that.
Thank you. I will not.
So I'm super excited about the, actually, the exhibit plan. I, I think there are a lot of stories that are to be told.
Yes.
I think our stories that we tell right now, we, we do eighteen sixty to nineteen fifty really well, and there's a lot of other stories to tell. I would, I would be very interested in our role in that, but I think our role could also get ugly because, because history is, 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 can be ugly. And so what, what, what do you think our role will be in that?
Well, I think that's, I think that's a good question, counsel. And one, one of the things that I think has always been a real strength of the past councils is. is, is the fact that they have scrupulously stayed away from trying to dictate content in museum exhibits. As a museum professional, I appreciate that. But I do think there's, I think it's important that, that our governance body have a role in that too. So I know we're going to be playing, we're planning to bring back check-ins with you on a fairly regular basis, certainly through Jim and Mike. But I think that's, I think that's one of the things that we, we want council to be engaged in this story as well, because it, it is largely the story of your constituents, past, present, and future.
You've had some great exhibits, the toy exhibit, the, um, clothing exhibit, we're just, I mean, they were world destinations. I, friends and I would meet there, do that, and then go out for, you know, a meal afterwards, it was like an event, like going to the, you know, downtown museum.
We, we've been awfully fortunate, we, we have a tremendously talented exhibit team and they, we just, we just added our new curator of exhibits about a month ago, Sarah LaBarre, so, uh, we've, we've got a great team, thank you, I appreciate your saying that.
Yeah, I would, I would like to echo that, guys, but it's really exciting exhibits. I would encourage you to, you know, be risky and, and, you know, try, try to, um, yeah, be risky, I think. That's exciting, no, be, be risky, I'm excited about it.
Oh.
Keep asking for it.
I'll be, I'll be risky, I'll be risky with, within the guidelines of the, uh, the city attorney's office.
So, yeah, um, LPS, I've been so excited to see all the opportunities with Arts and Culture and the integration with young folks and student populations, some of the showings at ACC as well, some of the exhibits at, um, at the train and everything else. Like, I would love to, and, and I was excited to hear that you said LPS facility for one of the murals, is that East Elementary? Or the Community Center by any chance?
It's Centennial, which is the Arts and Culture magnet.
Awesome, great. I, I know, not going to complain about that, would also like to make a plug for the new East Community Center being kind of a-
Talking about that, yeah.
A, a focal point of some of that as well. I think there's like a lot of, um, there's a lot of opportunity there to expand that hub of our library and museum into that space using Arts and Culture, uh, projects, murals, exhibits, things of that nature.
I could not agree more with that, because I think that, that, that is a quadrant in the city where we always have a little trouble, and a lot of it is transportation issues, but, but it's, it's hard, it's hard for them to come to us sometimes. So if we can do something there, at, at particular, I think that's, that, that new center gives us a tremendous opportunity to be able to capitalize on that.
Yeah, so that would be a hope of mine in that master plan.
We're already, we're already working on developing connections over there, we have some of them already, but I think that, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity, yeah.
As part of this new master plan, do you think it'll, it will include a marketing component?
Yes, yeah, and, and, and that's one of the things actually that Kelly and Hardy and I have talked about quite a bit is, you know, that, that, that's going to have to include, um, marketing. That's probably, tier, tier three is designated for tourism marketing, so I'm sure that what we'll be coming back to council with at some point is, here's how we'd like to use some of that money to, to really move this forward, so, yeah, you're, you're spot on.
Completely inappropriate, um, but I really encourage you to have a webpage dedicated to meeting all the animals at the farm.
Interesting, well, you know, the-
Risky.
No, not risky, but literally, meet the oxen, meet the bird.
You guys didn't have a social media post.
We did, we, we, in fact, our, our, it's interesting you said it, because our social media posts that, that our events coordinator does, that are related to our animals are always the most popular, they're always the ones that get the most, you know, most likes, most interaction.
I really want to know why the donkey got moved.
It's a sad story, but.
I'll, we'll take it offline, but I'm very curious.
They're idiotizing, so we need to-
That would, that would be okay, I, I think, uh, subversion should-
As we take plugs for things, is there any chance the tire swing will come back?
So the tire swing is a liability issue, um, so that, that, that was-
Too risky.
Well before Ashley's time, but, uh.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
It was the high, when my kids were there, it was the highlight, we'd make it around to that tire swing.
Yeah, we actually did have an accident, uh, on, on that, and that led to some reevaluation in the city. And we did work with the city attorney's office at that point, that was, gosh, probably fifteen years ago, but, yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, it, it's, we still hear from visitors who remember that from when they were kids, so it's not, it's not, it's not something we don't hear about.
How about zip line going down Littleton Boulevard?
That, that, that is too, that's too risky, I'm, I'm, I'm going to beat it that far, actually.
So zip line across Ketrane, back and forth.
That's right, that's right.
Ketrane and library and the museum.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
The archives are in the, essentially, our old water storage facility, and, and I feel like that's, uh, kind of a, an attempt to, to use a space, uh, for something. How, what, what's in the archives and is it a, is it actually a useful space?
It, it is a very useful space, it's, it's, uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with, with the history, the collection center that Councilmember Rogers was trying to bring to, it was, was the, uh, the city's water facility for a number of years. It became our, it was transformed into our collection center. And the main reason we were able to use that and use it so effectively is because it has twenty-four inch thick masonry walls. So it is really, really effective at maintaining a very stable, uh, temperature and relative humidity, and that's the most important thing, restoring objects, artifacts, so in particular, the more delicate ones like textiles or paper. So it's actually a really good facility for that, um, I'm sorry. Macrame is popular, so, quilts are popular, uh, so, so it actually has worked really well. What we're running, the issue we're running into with the collection center is capacity, we're at about ninety-ish percent. So at some point, we will be coming back to council, we, and we've done some things with some, some, some forms of compact storage that have allowed us to stretch that a bit, uh, but at some point, we will be coming back to council to, to chat about, um, potentially some sort of expansion there probably, but we're, we're very happy with the facility, it actually served museum really well.
Do you do tours of that?
We, we don't, as an accredited museum-
Not a couple of tours.
Yeah, we, we, we've done it for council though before, and we can certainly do that. As an accredited museum, there's, the, the, there are quite a few rules and regulations about, about security.
I don't want to cause any problems.
Well, and, and it honestly wouldn't, we, we do, we do a few tours, um, we do try to be really careful about that. We don't allow any photographs or anything of that sort, mostly because you're essentially telling people where the most valuable elements of your collection are and what they are, or where they are and what they are. So, uh, we do try to be really careful about that, very, very-
I don't, I don't mean to cause any problems, I'm just interested.
Absolutely don't, and it's a question we get a lot.
It's not the Ark of the Covenant.
You don't know that? We did have a council member a few years ago who was absolutely convinced we had a Picasso under the stairs and that if we just brought that out, we could probably solve all of the city's, uh, uh, financial woes. We do not have a Picasso under the stairs, so, sadly.
Nor would we sell it if we had.
Nor would we sell it if we had, exactly.
I'm done.
Are you though?
No.
Any other questions?
I can do this all night.
I've got a couple of questions, uh, first is probably more for Public Works, but, um, with the, the tree master plan, all the trees on the library, or not the library, the museum, quite a few that probably could use some attention.
Yeah, we've actually been really fortunate, um, Kelsey Stansfield and her crew have, uh, just in the last three or four years, really, two or three years, I guess, now that I think about it.
About two years.
Um, have, have extended their, their tree plan to the museum, to include the museum, and they've also included us in their budget. So some things that we didn't have, uh, the capacity to do, they, they have taken care of for us. There are a lot of trees on the museum grounds, we're probably doing them in priority order, but yeah, there, there is, there's definitely a plan to address some of the ones.
I'm just thinking the ones along the path where, you know, most people-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Look up them, like, that branch is maybe going to stay up there.
Well, some of, yeah, some of those cottonwoods are worrisome, so, yeah, I know, they're, they're keeping an eye on those, but we're, we are, we are in the, we're in the tree plan.
Next question is, I know, I think, previous council, two, three councils ago, we talked about, um, expanding events at the museum. Uh, what's the possibility of using that facility for more, uh, private events for, you know, for whether it's kids' birthday parties to come during the day versus renting out for stuff at night? I'm just trying to get more people there, I know, to, to balance the capacity of staff to that, but I'm trying to think of like, History Colorado Downtown and some of these other, um, venues, can, can get some revenue, but also get people in there and see what's going on.
It's, it is all, it is always a challenge, because it's a, it's a question of, of getting more people in for different functions, but also wear and tear on the, on the facility and wear and tear on the staff. Every, every museum that's able to do successfully, um, facility rentals of any sort, has a dedicated event staff. We don't have anything like that, we don't have any staff that work after five PM for that matter. So we, we, we could not do it with the existing staff we have now, we'd have to add, add personnel to do that.
I'm learning like contractors like say, hey, you can, you know, we have the venue space if there's a, a venue. Contractor that would take some of those services.
There, there are, we'd have to be very careful with that, because the way our building is set up, we don't have, really have a way to isolate our exhibit spaces. Uh, so again, the, our accreditation would, would, would require us to find some way to be able to court on those, those areas off so that they weren't accessible after hours when you didn't have professional museum staff on site.
That could be part of the facility's plan.
To that point, I think one, one of our, one of our city-wide challenges is having engagement space, meeting space, public space. And I know there are kind of several ideas in the works for how to, you know, have more of that. And I think I can foresee in the next couple of years, a discussion about how we staff that sort of support so that we can really facilitate more happening, you know, you know, across the city. So it might not be museum only, but as we have a few other lo- locations, um, that we want to broaden that and really look at the, the kind of business model and, um, with free space too. But, um, how we can kind of support that, I think that's an important conversation.
One of the things I've learned through my career, that, I've certainly worked in museums where, uh, facility rental was a major revenue stream and absolutely imperative to keeping the doors open, but you need to be prepared to plug about forty-five percent of your revenue back into your facility to, just to maintain it, otherwise you have a really nice facility for a year and a half, and then you have a really beaten-down facility going forward and your prices, your price structure really suffers.
Yeah, I'm not saying for just free, but, you know, as a revenue offset. And the last thing I had is, are you familiar with or aware of the two fifty, one fifty, uh, project state? And have you been in contact with History Colorado?
Yeah, yeah, Jenny, Jenny Hanks, our senior curator of collections, is our representative on that group.
What is that?
And so that is, I would say, that is, um, in twenty twenty-six is the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday of the US and the hundred-fiftieth birthday of Colorado.
The Centennial State.
The Centennial State, and so there's a big, uh, it was a bill two years ago?
Uh, two or three years ago.
It was in twenty-two, um, that there's this whole big project to celebrate that in twenty twenty-six with various events. I know there's a logo, there's a whole commission, a governor-appointed commission about that, and so I know that that's getting forward. They want to do all sorts of things, that's one of the things I've reached out to staff at History Colorado, I've waited to loop Jim in, is, um, they also want to do historic preservation, they want to get a hundred and fifty new sites across the state to be preserved, not necessarily associated with the museum here, but there are events and things that are tied in with that project, that I would love to see.
I think we have a ditch that's ready for that.
Might have a flume here.
Okay, just glad that you're aware of that.
Yeah, definitely.
Hopefully we can plan something along with that.
We're, we're working on that too, I, I think all of the, I think all of the participating museums are working on something, at least a little something on their own, but certainly History Colorado is the, is the main coordinating group.
Great, any other questions? Great, thanks.
Excellent.
All right, any?
Why did the bird get moved?
He's a brand-new animal, we introduced him, uh, to a, a fellow donkey, and they had some socialization issues, so.
There, there, there's lots of loud complaints coming over the neighborhood.
Yeah, he does not like being alone, they're, they're very social creatures, but, uh, we'll get him back in.
I'm confident it'll work great.
We'll change it up first, we'll see if the, uh, attorney has any updated report.
I don't, sorry to say.
You really missed your opportunity here, though. City manager?
Yep, two quick things, um, one, just a reminder to council and, and the public for that matter, that tomorrow at two PM is the annual police awards ceremony. They always appreciate it when council members can make it, it's a neat thing to see, just, just some recognition within the department and with families there and with a lot of the officer's support. So if you're available and you can make it, that's appreciated. And then, uh, the second thing is, I've been, uh, approached per council protocols by two council members and the mayor, with the request for a study session, um, about approval voting, um, as just something to learn, learn about, explore. So, you know, as we do, want, want to just bring that to you at this point, um, see if there is interest from a majority of the council for staff to spend some time developing that concept, learning about it, and then, uh, coming back to you with a study session for any further consideration.
I would be interested.
Okay.
Great.
So I think-
Thanks.
You were not on the list at first, so now we have four, so.
But now you have four.
I don't think I was on the list originally.
First, last week, okay. So I guess I will just, just check, do, I know we have one who's not here, uh, do we have four interested in a study session?
Sure, we can.
Alternative voting methods, not necessarily just approval.
Yeah, I would, I would, I want, yeah, thank you, ranked choice, I would like to learn about ranked choice too.
Yeah, okay.
With, with the addition, I would support it, but, so.
Low priority though.
So we'll go back, we'll bring this back in a couple of months, few months.
And then, Jim, we agreed that we're going to try to do a joint study session with, uh, TMB in-
July is the target.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure.
Yes, and that will be focused on the Vision Zero rules and-
And I'll talk with them about that next week then.
For council, that will be preceded by a study session, uh, in late May, I believe, May twenty-eighth, where you will also kind of have some first conversation about Vision Zero and just kind of come up to speed on learning so that when you are joined by the TMB, you can be ready to engage and, and think about how that might apply going forward, so.
So my current plan is to ask the TMB to be prepared to discuss kind of what you would have to do to do Vision Zero in the city based on their knowledge of the city. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Are they going to do anything about the building? Or is that just too premature at this point?
TMB?
Yeah, just kind of-
Yeah, they will be part of the, um, uh, sub-area plan for Littleton Boulevard. There, you know, the, uh, transportation will be one, well, likely, with, with your direction, be one of those, uh, components along with historic preservation, so that, you know, HPP will be involved. So that whole plan will be, will be coming to you within the next, I believe, month. So for your look at the scope, because you, there are some choices to be made on how broad or how narrow we go with that, and, uh, we want council to be plugged in.
The only reason I ask about timing is because it's so hard to get two boards together. If, if they're going to do Vision Zero, would it be appropriate to have them give some thoughts on Littleton Boulevard, or again, is that just too early?
I think it's too early.
Okay.
Any else, council? All right, we're adjourned.